Fade into board members seated at table. Jim Batson.
I'd like to call the, to order the, um, Community Day High School District 128 Board Meeting for May 19th, 2025.
Momentary pause.
Join me in, uh, reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone returns to their seats.
Harold, can we have a roll call, please?
Nina Austin.
Here.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Raul Deschule.
Here.
Doug Goleman.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Middleish Copwell. Wes Poland.
Here.
Jim Batson.
Okay, well note that, um, Little Esch is not here, but everyone else is. Uh, just take a brief moment to review the agenda. Um, uh, we're gonna honor our, um, outgoing student school board representatives and welcome some new ones. Uh, we have a public hearing on a fund transfer, a fairly routine thing. We have some communication items, um, including public comment, uh, teacher and ESP union reports, uh, reports from the student school board representatives, a few FOIA requests, and a superintendent's report. We have a consent vote agenda, uh, we have a number of action items, uh, listed. Um, and then, um, informational items, including the tentative budget for next year, uh, board comments, IASB report, and the CEDAL report, if we have anything. Uh, and that should do it. First of all, I, I just wanted to circle back around and, uh, after the meeting, um, last month, and, uh, acknowledge, uh, our CEDAL delegate, uh, Nina Austin will be our board, uh, CEDAL representative for this coming year. And also, uh, Raul, uh, will be our, um, representative for the D-128 Foundation. So I thank them, both of them, for the, uh, extra efforts on behalf of the board and on behalf of the district. So, without further ado, we'd like to honor our, um, school, student school board representatives here briefly. Um, I'm gonna ask the, uh, the, the two principals to, give us a few words and we're gonna have some plaque that we're gonna hand out, maybe take a picture or two.
Yeah, uh, look, we, we are blessed every year to have, uh, three amazing students at each school. And, uh, this year was no different for us. Uh, I've had the privilege of working with these three. For those of you that don't know, we obviously meet here tonight, but then there are several times a month where we connect and, uh, talk about what's going on in the schools and, uh, what might be an appropriate report, plus getting together with our LHS reps. So it's been, uh, a pleasure. Uh, and I just want to, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills School community, thank Griffin Nichols and Daniela Gomezinez and Iman Daella. So thank you to the three of you, really appreciate your work. All done.
And on the LHS side, um, you know, this year's board reps, uh, were chosen at the time by Dr. Kalentis as, uh, as the, uh, former principal at Libertyville High School before he transitioned to the district office. And so, uh, I got to meet Prem, Victoria, and Cyra as we started the school year. And I'm sure as we started, they were, you know, a little bit like, who is this Dr. Albin guy? We weren't chosen by him. What are we getting into? Um, and they certainly helped put me right at ease. Um, we're always, you know, monthly, we would meet, we'd talk about what was going on in the school. Um, and I always really counted on them to say, what's happening? Tell me what's happening, what's the senior class feeling like? Uh, you know, what's going on? And, you know, and help, you know, interact as best we can with, with everything that's happening. And so, uh, and they did a wonderful job, you know, every month, always doing that, uh, working with me on, you know, letting me know what our board reports are looking like, looking like, and just in general, uh, you know, being great representatives for the entire senior class of 2025 at LHS. And so to all of you, thank you very much. Did a wonderful job.
It, it's so great to have all of you participate with the board. It gives us, it grounds us, it gives us insight that we otherwise wouldn't have. It's, and it's just fun sometimes, just to hang out with you guys. Um, uh, we really appreciate all the work that you do, because we know you do a lot of work related to this outside of these, uh, these meetings, in addition to all the other things that you already participate in. And, uh, um, but I'd like to thank you on, on behalf of the board. I don't know if any of the board-
I'd just like to add that, um, you guys were amazing at the luncheons and I enjoyed your dessert choices.
Okay, I think we're gonna take a photo.
Students receive certificates and takes pictures with school board members for about the next 30 seconds. Students receive certificates and takes pictures with school board members for about the next 30 seconds. Ray Albin. Ray Albin approaches the podium.
To the board, I'd like to introduce two of our three new reps. Um, this is Ava Grede Tor, right? And Andrew Trobe. And Ruhi Patel, uh, couldn't be here tonight, but she'll be joining us from LHS this upcoming year.
Dr. John Gil Liam approaches the podium.
Uh, and then on the Vernon Hill side, come up you three, uh, Olivia Bush and Anika Talari and Ashfar Amesh. And Dr. Young is actually gonna be, of course, your leader, so Dr. Young, get up here. Uh, I always say that one of the hardest decisions we make all year is selecting our new board reps, uh, because we interview just, uh, an amazing slate of candidates and you three rose to the top for Dr. Young and I. So congratulations.
Students receive certificates and takes pictures with school board members for about the next 30 seconds. Everyone returns to their seats. Everyone returns to their seats. Jim Batson.
Thank you, everybody, and, uh, welcome to the new board reps. We'll, we'll see you in the, in the early fall.
Momentary pause.
Okay, moving on, uh, we have a public hearing for a fund transfer, so I will start by declaring the hearing open. Um, and then, uh, Dan, will you give us some, uh, background on this?
Dan Stanley.
Yeah, um, so, uh, school funds are separate, school funds are separated into different funds. We have money in education fund, operations and others. Um, our cafeteria project, we're paying with our fund balance. Uh, and some of that cash that we're using to pay for it is in our education fund. And so we need to transfer it to the O and M fund, uh, to pay for the LHS cafeteria project. And so by law, there's a lot of rules when you move money between funds. By law, you can do that, but as long as the board passes a resolution and that you have a public hearing. And so that's what this is for.
Jim Batson.
Okay, um.
Momentary pause.
Any board members have any questions or comments? I know this has been discussed previously, so I think we're, we're all up to speed on this. I do, uh, am required to open up for public comment specifically on this topic at this point. We're gonna have another public comment for general items, but anything related to the hearing about the funds transfer? Anyone have any comments to make? Okay, hearing none. I will declare the hearing closed and we will take action on this later in the agenda. Okay, so moving on, um, now's the invitation for public comment. We have three folks signed in. Jack Jansen is first.
Cam returns to podium. Jack Jansen approaches the podium.
Is this working all, all well? All right. Um, so hello, everyone. In case you don't remember from last Monday, I'm Jack Jansen, a freshman swimmer, swimmer for Vernon Hills High School. Um, I want to thank you all for giving me another chance to speak about the Rise Aquatic contract. So I swim for both Rise and Vernon Hills, but I want to focus solely on Vernon Hills, uh, swim program and how a Rise partnership would massively benefit us. So a typical day for Vernon Hills swimmers starts with a 6:00 AM practice. Dive in, beginning drills, swimming up to 3,000 yards of focused swimming, designed to activate every muscle and sharpen every stroke. That's the first half. Then comes the second one, the next 3,000 yards. This part of the day set is carefully designed by Coach Pardon, most likely after watching a Navy SEAL documentary. Then we go through a full day of classes, managing academics and responsibilities. When the bell rings, we don't head home, we return to the water for another practice from 3:40 to 6:00 PM. That's over five hours of training daily, not including the occasional weight training and other land exercises. We do it without complaint from Thanksgiving through March. Why? Because we're chasing something bigger, conference titles, placing in state, team unity and pride. The funny thing is, we already have all of these things. Our team holds two conference titles in a row and has placed as high as eighth in the entire state, which is an incredible accomplishment. But the thing, here's the thing, we've done that all with outdated equipment, limited resources, and without the full support a program like Rise can offer. Imagine what we could achieve with the right tools in our hands. There's no telling how far we could go. All we need is the support to match the talent and hard work. Secondly, I would like to readdress the fact that less and less trained, trained swimmers have been coming in to Vernon Hills Swim Team. I'd like to reiterate, reiterate from last week that Rise has turned down over 100 swimmers in the past year due to little space. This is causing a big impact on the amount of swimmers coming into both schools' programs. An easy solution for this is the Park District using their own pool and the return of Rise pool usage at Vernon Hills High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list is Andrew Spivak.
Andrew Spivak approaches the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I, uh, appreciate you giving me a few minutes to talk. I'm probably not gonna be able to speak as eloquently as, uh, as Mr. Jansen, but, uh, I am a parent of, uh, two Vernon Hills, uh, high school swimmers and, uh, who has been at the Rise Aquatic for over the last, uh, eight years. Both of them are accomplished swimmers and they really cherish their time on their team. Uh, my older son is holding number of records for the school and, uh, and also was very excited to participate in, uh, in the regional and sectional swims. Uh, however, he contributes, as much as he contributes, um, all of his achievements to Coach Pardon and the unity of the team at Vernon Hills, uh, he also cherishes the time for the feeding program that Rise Aquatic has provided. It's been, uh, a number of times that, uh, my younger son now, that is also trying to follow his footsteps, is, um, turning down practices and, uh, not really willing to, uh, participate in swimming as, as much as my older son was, simply because, um, to him, as long as they don't get to swim and practice in his own high school pool, it's, uh, it makes it, uh, not as special as, uh, the time of the high school swimming comes up. Uh, the coaches at the Rise Aquatic is, are great. They do have a huge participation in, um, in that program, but it's obviously that it's not enough time, uh, to dedicate to each swimmer as you have limited amount of time in the pool. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, their contract is coming up and, uh, I would like to petition to, uh, for a board to extend the contract and to allow them to swim in the Vernon Hills High School. Um, also, I wanted to bring to your attention not only the financial contribution that the club can bring by, uh, bringing us, uh, new equipment, um, new board that we need, uh, badly needed painting and renovation of our stands and, uh, uh, areas where all the guests participate, but all of the meets that, that happened with the Rise Aquatics happen mostly here. Uh, in, it used to happen mostly here at the Vernon Hills High School. And, uh, it's, uh, it's very, uh, very eventful weekend when you have, you know, hundreds, uh, of hundreds swimmers, uh, boys and girls that come in and, uh, and spend pretty much the entire Saturday morning, afternoon, uh, all of their parents, they also come in and cherish them and cheer for them and their clubs. And Vernon Hills, uh, whether we realize it or not, does get, uh, quite a bit of revenue from, uh, lunches, from, uh, local businesses and from shopping that, uh, so massive, uh, amount of athletic, uh, activities are happening here in Vernon Hills. Uh, when, uh, when we were told years ago that, uh, Turtles Club is gonna take over, uh, we were under an impression that it's only temporary because, uh, they needed to renovate their pool where they're presently working. But, uh, now that the pool is completely done, uh, we wanted to bring Rise back so our swimmers can contribute, uh, their effort to Vernon Hills High School and, uh, perform here at their best. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Gwen Jansen?
Gwen Jansen approaches the podium.
Shorter than everyone here, sorry. Hi, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the aquatics programming and the partnership with Rise Aquatics. Um, as you know, my name is Gwen Jansen. I'm the parent of this freshman swimmer and, uh, senior swimmer, both, uh, Vernon Hills High School varsity swimmers. Um, I want to start off by making one point perfectly clear. My concerns about the issue at hand are not because I'm a Rise parent. Um, they're certainly also not because of anything against our Park District Turtles program. My daughter, who's, uh, soon to graduate this Thursday, was a turtle swimmer for a decade and she continues to coach for the program, um, currently. I, I value and appreciate all that our Park District does and has to offer and I, I want to see that partnership continue to prosper and succeed. Um, but the concerns I have are coming because I'm a District 128 parent and taxpayer. And I don't believe the recent change from 2022 to the Rise agreement puts our students and our district finances as priorities. Moreover, it creates more division between our two fantastic high schools and causes a significant inequity of opportunity and support. LHS has a productive contributing partner for its aquatics programming and facilities, while we at VHS have increased wear and tear on an already aging aquatics facility with no contributing partnership or financial support. Board members, I, I hope you've had the opportunity to read my email, uh, that I sent earlier. So I hope you understand that Rise Aquatics is no outside interest. Rather, they are a 40-year, four-zero, four-decade member of the District 128 Aquatics Community, serving over 200 swimmers currently, who will overwhelmingly feed into our two schools if they're not already attending our schools. Let's not treat them as outsiders, but welcome them back into Vernon Hills High School so that our hardworking athletes here can enjoy the support, the investment, and the opportunity that their LHS counterparts continue to benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Batson.
Okay, that's all that have signed in. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Come on forward.
Matt Laporte approaches the podium.
Just provide your name, if you don't mind.
I'm Matt Laporte, Executive Director of the Vernon Hills Park District. Uh, I'm grateful for the chance to introduce myself. I'm taking a tour of all the other taxing, uh, entities in the community, uh, to spend some time. Um, I'd like to highlight how our Park District serves the community and fosters strong partnerships, especially with District 128. I began this role in October, transitioning from the Village of Libertyville, where I was the Recreation Director, and collaborated with District 128 on joint use agreements. I also previously served as Facility Manager of Lakeview Fitness Center, transitioning that building from the Central Lake YMCA. Our mission at the Park District is to conserve nature, support wellness, and inspire leisure. That's delivered through award-winning park management, recreation programs, and community events. We manage 25 parks, five facilities, a variety of athletic fields, playgrounds, miles of trails, and countless programs and camps. A core strength of our district is our collaboration with local agencies. My predecessor helped establish quarterly meetings with public officials to ensure we're working together for our residents. Our shared use agreement with District 128 is a prime example. It saves taxpayer dollars and expands access to facilities for both education and recreation. One of our key programs is the Turtle Swim Club. Launched in 2009 during the YMCA days and officially adopted by the Park District in 2012 when we took over the facility, the team operates two seasons and serves over 100 youth per season, 80% of whom become District 120, attend District 128 schools. Our rates are significantly more affordable than other providers and we end up employing many high school students as lifeguards, counselors, and instructors. Vernon Hills High School pool use by the Turtles, Totals, uh, Turtles Program totals roughly 858 hours per year. This scheduling opens our pool at Lakeview for lap swim for our community, water aerobics for our seniors, lessons, uh, for children, and joint use with our Special Rec Association. Though we haven't funded upgrades at Vernon Hills High School, we maintain shared use amenities like tennis courts, fields, the Sullivan Center, and contributed to the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex turf project. It's been a strong, mutually beneficial relationship. Yes, the Turtle Swim Team and British Swim School lesson, swim lesson program generates surplus revenue, but that revenue supports our broader mission and it helps subsidize the parks, the trails, the special events, and the low-cost community programs that otherwise wouldn't be financially sustainable. We're excited to see the community is enthusiastic about swimming. Vernon Hills is a, High School is a perfect home for Turtle Swim Club. Libertyville High, with its larger pool and demand, and no demand from the Village of Libertyville Recreation Department, is an ideal home for Rise. Both schools and communities benefit when these programs complement rather than compete with each other. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak?
Pause for the public.
Okay, hearing none. We will move on. We have a, um, do we have a teacher union report? Anyone?
Jason Rush approaches the podium.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, I'm Jason Rush. VHS Applied Technology Teacher, Libertyville resident, and the D-128 Union Building Representative for Vernon Hills High School. On behalf of the D-128 Teachers Union, we would like to welcome our new school board members and acknowledge the work and collaboration that has already taken place within the past few weeks. Thank you. Student school board representatives, thank you for sharing your voices and insights this past school year. You've had a front row seat and have actively participated in guiding this excellent school district. We hope you will continue to be deliberately engaged in many other civic leadership posts as your adult lives unfold. Lastly, earlier tonight, the D-128 Teachers Union hosted the Spring Snacks and Study Night at both Aspen Drive and Cook Memorial Libraries. I just came from there, uh, Aspen Library, uh, where there were scores of students working, getting snacks, getting help from math and science teachers. This is an event that's happened for over 10 years and it's really a, a great event. Um, as a former science teacher, I've been there almost all the 10 years because there seems to need a lot of science and, uh, math help. Our membership is happy to welcome the students and help answer questions and alleviate concerns as those students prepare for final exams. We wish all of our district leaders a happy and healthy summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, educational support professionals, uh, do we have a representative to speak tonight? Nope, okay. All right, we'll move on, uh, one final round, student school board rep, reports. Take it away.
Prem Acharya. As my time at LHS and as a student board representative comes to a close, I can't think of a better way to wrap up this incredible journey by discussing our prom. How that stone banquet in Hoffman Estates, the theme of an enchanted garden was brought to life through minimalist decorations and a joyful atmosphere. From the main floor to the silent disco area, the energy of the dance was outstanding and many students were enjoying their time with the many different options. Beyond dancing, there were outdoor patios where students were able to play games like bags and connect four or just hang out. The food was served in a reception style from seven to nine, with many great offerings such as pasta, as a pasta station, and mashed potato bars, as well as many accommodations so that no one would miss out. It was clear that there was a lot of effort put into making everything happen. Thank you to every staff member, volunteer, and planner who gave us an unforgettable send-off. Prom was just one moment in a larger journey, one that I've had the honor of experiencing at LHS. Over the past four years, I've grown in ways I could never have imagined. I've had the chance to take part in and found clubs that reflected my passions and others, explore new academic fields, and even take part in golf, a sport I didn't play before high school. Whether it was building a project with friends or even just completing coursework, I was always met with encouragement and support. Beyond simply teaching, teachers at LHS have inspired me. They inspired me to challenge myself, grow, and remain curious. Administrators at LHS and within the community and district, such as Dr. Albin and Dr. Kalentis, have provided me with opportunities to grow as a leader and a person. Because of the teachers and administrators, I leave LHS more confident in who I am and who I will become. Thank you to the board, faculty, administrators, and teachers for creating a space where students are educated and empowered to make great change. Thank you.
Victoria Diaz-Martin-Stacosta.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start this meeting off by expressing my gratitude for this board and this amazing opportunity. I'm so grateful to have been able to represent my fellow students at these meetings and be able to share with all of you LHS's school events. Within these meetings, I've made so many new friends and gotten so much more involved with my school, so thank you. Now on to school events that happened in May. On May 16th, LHS held their Yearbook Distribution Day. This day involved students who made the yearbook distributed, the, the students made the yearbook distributing, the yearbooks to all students outside in the freshman football field during lunch periods. This event also included many fun activities for students. Students had the options to go on slides, bouncy houses, DJs, dunk teachers in a water tank, and even got food from multiple local food trucks. The food truck options involved taco truck, American funnel cake, and Kona ice. When students picked up their yearbook, they also received a ticket for a free Kona ice, a $5 ticket for any food truck, a pen, and a tub of cotton candy. During this event, students could go, could go up to any student and teacher and sign each other's yearbook to keep forever memories. Last year was the first year when LHS started doing the Yearbook Distribution Day and this has become a new tradition which students look forward to every year. It is a very fun and exciting day for both students and staff members, which created new memories for all, especially for all seniors who will be having their graduation on May 22nd. As I finish off this board report, I would again just like to say thank you to all, thank you to this amazing community for the last four years as an LHS student. You guys have helped me create amazing friendships and forever's memories. Thank you.
Sarah Abraham.
Good evening. Before I give my board report tonight, I would like to express my most sincere thanks to this board, for the opportunity to bring the student perspective to the table. It has been a true honor to serve as a voice for my peers. I am forever grateful that I was a part of this board and I'm so thankful for all the amazing people I've gotten to know through this role. Now for my report. This past week, the class of 2025 celebrated their last days of high school in a way that was both heartfelt and memorable. On May 14th, seniors wore white shirts to school and throughout classes and lunch periods, they were able to have both their peers and teachers sign their shirts. Using colorful markers to write messages, inside jokes, and well wishes on each other's backs and sleeves, this, this, this simple yet meaningful gesture gave students a way to capture their memories and friendships as they prepare to go their separate ways. Caitlin Galloway says, "It was a fun activity to do and I know that once I graduated from LHS, when I look at the shirt, I will remember all my amazing friends and teachers." In addition to the shirt signing, last week, the school also generously provided donuts for all the seniors. It was a fun, lighthearted way to kick off the day and students were extremely excited by the wide variety of donuts. Many seniors reported being pleasantly surprised, um, with arguably some of the best donuts in Libertyville. As we seniors prepare for graduation this coming Thursday, it will be the memories from the events like these that we will fondly remember LHS by. I know I speak for all my fellow classmates when I say that LHS has shaped each and every one of us into the people that we are today, providing us with the skills- providing us with the skills and the confidence to conquer our next chapters. Thank you to all the faculty who have made LHS constantly feel like a second home. You will all be so missed. And once again, for this unforgettable opportunity, thank you.
Good evening, board. I can't fathom the fact that this will be my last board report. I've learned so much about the inner workings of our community through meetings and through conversations over lunch. Thank you to all the board representatives and the principals for the time, energy, and heart you put into our district. I have no doubt that Olivia, Anika, and Ashva will do an incredible job next year as next year's board rep. These, these, there are so many things that, that make D one twenty eight such a special place to go to school. For example, our College Resource Center hosted Senior Decision Day on May second and then Main Gym. There are photo backdrops, granola bars, duck donuts, and my personal favorite, bananas. Also, this past Friday, we celebrated our seniors at the Honors Assembly. Sophomore Ami Pan said, "I thought the Honors Assembly did a really nice job displaying everyone's talents and achievements. It was fun to see my friends and teammates win awards for things that they've done over the heights, over their high school career." Even students who didn't win an award were happy to be there to support their friends, though many seniors noted and were sad about the absence of many juniors who were busy taking the AP Physics one exam. Speaking of AP tests, they've been occurring over the past two weeks. Many students felt well-prepared by the teachers. Senior Neri Mara shared that the AP Psych exam on Friday was a tough experience due to nationwide delays. Quite a few of us seniors were crying as we were upset that we were going to miss the final bell. However, thankfully, her four other AP tests went by smoothly. Now, on to more, some more fun events. The Best Buddies Fourth Annual Walkathon on May third raised an impressive seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Senior and Vice President Sidavula said, "It was a great way to end the year seeing all the buddies and club members come together and raise money and just have fun." Additionally, our D one twenty eight Storm Special Olympics team is sending two athletes to state in late June at Illinois State University. Abi Nawaki for the four hundred meter and the two hundred meter dash, and Rishi Arun for the fifty meter dash, both qualified by taking gold. And finally, in VHS Athletics, six girls went to state for badminton, Callie Bennett, Lacya Kankala, Nehakul Karney, Anika Verma, Dia Rajan, and Sanve Gogani, with Nehakul Karney placing seventh in signals, singles. In the track side of things, Ella Hollinger qualified for the eight hundred meter, and Julia Rousa qualified for the high jump, and they'll be competing at Eastern, Eastern Illinois University this Friday. Good luck, girls, and thank you for always letting us share our voices.
Greetings, board. In this past few weeks, Vernon Hills has been honoring a multitude of people across our school, whether it be us seniors, Dr. G, or our many staff members who are retiring this year. To start off, the seniors held their dearly prank, this year being hundreds of students showing up outside Dr. G's house in the early morning hours while keeping the tree out front. It was quite a sight, and I'm glad we maintained the senior tradition in a safe manner. Secondly, we honored the one and only the Dr. G alongside our school's twenty-fifth anniversary with a mural outside the office, which I'm sure you all saw while entering the school. If not, you can get out and see. It'll forever stand as a testament to the time and effort that Dr. G put to our school and making it home for all students across the community. Third, I want to honor the many retirees who are unfortunately leaving our school this year, the list being Mr. McDonald, Ms. McDonald, Mr. Healy, Mr. Sundell, Ms. Stevens, Dr. G, Officer Mead. It's sad to see all these great staff members leave our school, and I hope that we don't ever forget the wonderful impact that they had here. Finally, I wanted to thank the board, Dr. G, and our past school representatives for granting me and my peers the opportunity to represent our school. It's such a privilege and unique opportunity that our school has. This is especially impactful for a student like me who has a speech disability and was still provided the chance and equal opportunity to be selected for this role. My hope is that through this role, I've inspired others who are a little like me to use their voice. Anika, Ashva, Olivia, all exhibit honesty, courage, and respect. They each exemplify what it means to be a Vernon Hills student leader, and I know that they'll do a wonderful job. Thank you, and that's all for me tonight. Passing out to Eman.
We'll see if I start crying again. Okay. Good evening, board. To start, thank you endlessly for this opportunity to serve our school community. While I've always known the amazing feats our students accomplish each month, it's extra rewarding to be able to sit up here and share them all with you. Being able to tell you about student life at VHHS is such an exhilarating thing, and I could not be happier to share it with Danny and Griffin. As sad as I am to be leaving tonight, I could not be more excited for Olivia, Ashva, and Anika to fill our shoes. You three will do such amazing things. Best of luck and always stay daring. For my last report, I'm here to share about our final fine arts events. To start, the Cavalier Choir was concert was last Monday. Senior Clara DeSandro shared that the concert was a really fun experience, but very bittersweet because it marked the end of her four-year choir career, and she was sad that she would never have the chance to sing with those people again. One of my favorite pieces they sang was a series of songs from the movie Footloose, as their unique twists brought a cool experience to it. Next up, the Farewell Seniors Orchestra Concert was last Sunday. While all four orchestras performed during this concert, special attention is given to our wonderful seniors. Eli Anderson, who is pursuing an education in music, shares that it was so amazing to play a solo with his orchestra friends behind him, and it was also super fun to watch the memories from high school during their senior animation. Though it was bittersweet, he says he'll remember this period of his life for forever. Swishing over to the world of dance, right before AP tests was the orchestra, the orchestra dance company put on two amazing shows Friday and Saturday night. Though the physical number of dancers was less this year, the quality of the show was just as amazing. Sophomore Emma Wright says the experience was a lot of fun and it featured amazing dances. It was fun for her to watch the show come together as the season went on and witnessing the student choreographers getting to teach their own moves was great because she got to see their visions come to life. Last but certainly not least, this past Friday was the annual art show. Senior Joining shares that the art show was fun and it was super nice being able to showcase her art while sharing the process and idea with others. That's all for me. Congratulations to everyone for making this year one of the best, and may our school forever be a place of growth, acceptance, and daring students. Thank you.
Once again, thank you all for all your contributions and for the incoming student board reps. You've got big shoes to fill, so, but we have, we'll, we'll look forward to your participation next year. Okay, moving on, uh, FOIA requests. We had one FOIA request as listed, nothing significant there. We will move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, I'm pleased to share an update on the transition of the new superintendent, Dr. Mark Schaefer, who will begin his new role on July first. Becky and I have been meeting with Mark weekly where we provide him all the updates that's happening in the district regarding all the different issues that we're facing and discussing. Additionally, he was able to visit the district in both April and May to meet different groups of people and staff and individuals to get to know them before he starts his new job, and his next visit will be on May thirtieth. Uh, last week, the Illinois Association of School Boards provided a workshop with Mark and the school board, setting the stage and helping support a working relationship moving forward. And lastly, Mark is also working with district administration to plan summer and opening week activities for staff. The transition's going very well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is our consent vote agenda. Does anyone have any items that you'd like to pull off and consider separately? Okay, hearing none?
Do we need to pull out the regular board minutes since we were not part of that meeting? And then the, also the, the closed session minute meetings because we weren't at the first one?
I, I think we're required to vote. We, without those other board members to vote, we're the only board now that can vote to approve those. So somebody's got to approve. It's, it's approving putting them in the record, so it's.
Right, I understand. I just want to make sure that we're not, this is not something we should be abstaining from, but then we don't have enough people to vote for it, so.
Right, right. Yeah, it's just, this is just a vote to put it into record, to put it, to formalize the minutes. Yeah.
Right, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
It's a good question. It's, it's unusual because we have so many new board members, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we're okay.
All right.
Okay, um, can I have a motion in a second to approve the consent vote agenda?
Pollen so moved.
Fligo second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Carol, roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Deschmok.
Hi.
Fligo.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Pollen.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Okay, uh, motion is approved. We have for action items, we have employment of employees. These are a few employees that came in after our committee meeting earlier in the month, so didn't make it onto the consent vote agenda, so. Uh, can I have a motion to approve these?
Hassel so moved.
Pollen second.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Okay, roll call, please.
Deschmok.
Hi.
Fligo.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Pollen.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Bass.
Hi. Okay, uh, motion is approved. Um, we have an intergovernmental agreement for hearing, uh, itinerant. Uh, this is an intergovernmental agreement with District one twenty. Brian, is there any additional information you want to provide at this point?
Oh, this is, um, presented at the P and P Committee meeting a week ago. It's very similar agreement to what we have in place, uh, this year with District one twenty.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Pollen second.
Okay, any questions or comments by the board? Again, as, uh, as Brian mentioned, we discussed it earlier in, in the month, so, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Fligo.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Pollen.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deschmok.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, item C, uh, another intergovernmental agreement, similar but for a physical therapist, and this is an intergovernmental agreement with District seventy and one twenty, so the three of us, uh, share these resources.
Again, we already have this, uh, agreement in place for this year, and, um, so we are, um, asking again, recommending for the intergovernment agreement for next year.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Pollen so moved.
Fligo second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Hassel.
Hi.
Pollen.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deschmok.
Hi.
Fligo.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Um, next on the agenda is something I know a number of people are interested in, the, uh, agreement with the RISE Aquatics Club.
This is our, uh, annual agreement with RISE Aquatics Club that we've had in place, uh, for the past few years, so we are bringing that. Again, our recommendation is to approve the RISE aquatic agreement for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Jim Batson. And this agreement includes language for both high schools, correct? For both Vernon Hills and Libertyville.
This is the, so the RISE Aquatic Agreement, the way that it's written right now is that their main, uh, usage will be at Libertyville.
Momentary pause.
Can I have a, um, motion in a second, please?
Hassel, I move to approve the agreement with RISE Aquatics.
Austin second.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
While this is, uh, in agreement right now that's primarily for, um, Libertyville access, there is flexibility in this agreement. Should there be space to expand into Vernon Hills, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so it is flexible. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that verification. Uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Pollen.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deschmok.
Hi.
Fligo.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. We have a consolidated district plan. Uh, Dr. Kalentis is not here, but Dan, you can, uh, give some background on this.
Yeah, um, I, I think a better word for this is, would be a coordinated district plan. This is a requirement by ISB to make sure that districts are talking to each other and basically so that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing when you're talking about grants. You're not overlapping and that you're coordinating that together. Uh, this talks about how we're, our plan to use our federal grants, uh, both our title grants and our special needs grants that we get, uh, from the federal government. The usage is really the same from the prior years. We have specific purposes for each of those grants. Those really are not changing, uh, but this is required, this is a first step to, the board is required to approve this, um, so that we can then apply for our grants, so we can't apply for our fiscal year twenty-six grants until this, uh, is submitted, uh, to ISB. So that's overall in the process why this is before the board and kind of why that's, why.
And this happens every year? This is a part of the standard grant process?
Every year, yep, and there's really no, no much difference from a prior year plan.
Okay.
Hassel, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six consolidated district plan as presented.
Pollen second.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, roll call, please.
Austin.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deschmok.
Hi.
Fligo.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Pollen.
Hi.
Uh, motion passes. Uh, next on the list is the annual Lake County indemnification agreement.
Yeah, a lot of annual agreements here. Uh, this one is with Lake County, uh, and so what this, what this basically says is, uh, Lake County will withhold, uh, permits from developers in unincorporated areas as long as, um, or if the district doesn't tell them that it's okay, uh, that they have an agree, that they can have an agreement with the developer. In exchange for that, Lake County says if we get sued because of that, you're going to indemnify us. So this is an annual agreement that we have, uh, but we've never, this has never been actuated.
Yeah, it's never been an issue, yeah. Okay, or at least, you know, to our knowledge. Okay, can we have a motion in a second, please, for the?
Pollen second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Deschmok.
Hi.
Fligo.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Pollen.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. These next two, uh, relate to what was discussed earlier with the, uh, in the, um, what do we call it, the hearing? Uh, this first one is resolution authorizing the, and directing the transfer of interest from the Working Cash Fund to the Education Fund. Any further information? I mean, we've already talked about this quite a bit.
The interest that you generate, uh, you can transfer to any fund you want, and we typically transfer that out to you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, please?
Hassel, I move to approve the resolution authorizing and directing the transfer of interest from the Working Cash Fund to the Ed Fund.
Pollen second.
Uh, any questions or comments? Again, this was discussed in, uh, previously, uh, so can we have a roll call, please?
Deschmok.
Hi.
Fligo.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Pollen.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi. Okay, motion passes and, uh, resolution authorizing transfer from the Ed Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. Can we have a motion in a second for this one, please?
Motion by Fligo to approve the resolution authorizing transfer from Education Fund into the Operations and Maintenance Fund of Community High School District one twenty-eight, Lake County, Illinois.
And this is, uh, in the amount of eight million dollars.
Hassel second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Fligo.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Pollen.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deschmok.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Um, resolution, um, we have the, um, uh, fiscal year twenty-six treasurer's bond. Maybe just a brief.
State law requires your treasurer, who is me, uh, to be bonded, and so there's, uh, legal requirements on how much that bonding has to be. And so we have coverage of eleven million, uh, and that's based on ten percent of your la, your most recent fiscal year's June thirtieth balance, which for us would be June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And so we have coverage in here for eleven million. Uh, and just to clarify, the coverage is eleven million, the premium cost of that is six thousand, six hundred dollars, but the, the coverage of the bond is eleven million.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the treasurer's bond in the amount of six thousand dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, six thousand, six hundred dollars.
Deschmok motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-six treasurer's bond in the amount of six thousand, six hundred.
Pollen second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hassel.
Hi.
Pollen.
Hi.
Austin.
Austin.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deschmok.
Hi.
Fligo.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. We move on to our informational items, the FY '26 tentative budget. Dan, you have some brief comments on this?
Yeah, so we have our tentative budget that is very tentative at this point. This doesn't even have our most current information in there, so we're updating that, and we'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks. And so we'll have a more updated version for you in the future. What you have is the state budget form, which if you're not very familiar, is not necessarily the most easy thing to read. And so when we get really current information, I'll be able to give you an analysis that really is telling you what's actually happening in the budget. So stay tuned for more information. But you have documents that have, this is at least the form of the document, and a lot of the information is in there. But we'll be updating that over the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Next on the agenda is board comments and events. This isn't normally a point in time when we can share maybe events that we've attended, learning opportunities we've attended. I will echo what Dr. Blackner mentioned earlier, the great workshop that we all attended last week, and thank Dr. Schaefer for his participation in that. I look forward to working with him. And then as for events, we're all signed up for graduation ceremonies this week. We'll be handing out diplomas, so for a number of you, that'll be a new experience, and it's a great experience to be able to thank all these students for their hard work over the years and hand them their diplomas. So I will see some of you at the event I'm attending, and so we'll split up and accomplish those. Anyone else have any other comments or questions?
Wes Poland.
I do. I attended Dr. Gilliam's retirement gift unveiling, which was very nice. If you haven't had a chance, stop down and see the mural. It is very cool. Looks great. It will be sad without Dr. Gilliam in the building, but we'll have a wall to remember you and, you know. Also, you know, we're looking forward to having Dr. Young. But you will be missed.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next would be the IASB report. This is normally a time that I'd report on anything happening with IASB. There's really nothing significant going on. We have a planning meeting coming up for, since I'm on the Lakes Division Executive Team, we have a meeting for next year's events, so more to come on that. CDAL, I know you haven't had a chance really to get involved with that, but this would be an opportunity for you to bring anything that may have happened since the last board meeting to our attention.
We actually with Callie and Becky, and it was a great meeting. They just introduced me to the program and what my responsibilities were, so it's good.
It was a great program. Thank you. Thank you for your extra efforts on that. Future agenda items, you'll see those there. If anyone has additional things that they might be interested in,